Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Willow City Council Regular Meeting on June 24th. We will call this meeting to order at 6:01. We will first start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please stand?
salute what
I believe this to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation with the
And city clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Pride.
Here.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Thank you.
Perfect. City manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to ask if the council would move up Item 7B Landscape and Lighting Special Assessment District ahead of 7A. Just switch those two.
Okay. Got that noted here. Anything further?
That's it, no.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ceremonial ceremonial matters proclamation National Food Truck Day. So City of Willow's proclamation National Food Truck Day. Whereas food trucks have become a vibrant and essential part of the local culinary scene, offering diverse innovative and accessible dining options that reflect the cultural richness of our community. And whereas food trucks enhance the sense of community by bringing people together in public spaces, supporting local events and creating lively welcoming environments that enrich the social and cultural fabric of our city. And whereas food truck operators are small business owners entrepreneurs and culinary artists who contribute to the economic vitality of our city by creating jobs, supporting local agriculture and energizing public spaces. Whereas National Food Truck Day is a time to recognize the hard work creativity and resilience of food truck vendors and to celebrate their role in bringing people together through shared meals, community gatherings. Whereas the cities across the country, including the city of Willow's, benefit from the presence of food trucks at events, parks, business districts and neighborhoods, enhancing local flavor and fostering a spirit of innovation. And whereas supporting food trucks aligns with the city's goals of encouraging small business growth, promoting economic development and increasing access to diverse food options. Now therefore be it resolved, I Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's do hereby proclaim June 27th, 2025 as National Food Truck Day in the city of Willow's and encourage all residents to support our local food trucks and the hardworking individuals behind them. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand an official seal this 24th day of June 2025. There any food truck owners here to receive this proclamation? No. Okay. All right, I will square that away. Next up on the agenda, Item 6. Public comment and consent calendar forum. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved with a single vote unless removed for separate discussion by the city manager or council. Individuals wishing to speak on consent items or matters not on the agenda are asked to complete a speaker's card and submit it to the city clerk. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor and council members and are limited to three minutes. By law, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Regarding Item 6A Minutes Approval, 6B Planning Commission Appointment, 6C UPEC Fire Bargaining Unit, 6D UPEC General Bargaining Unit, 6E Management Confidential and Part-Time Library Employees, 6F Mid-America Health Reimbursement Arrangement, 6G City Librarian Job Classification and Salary Schedule, 6 Test, oh. 6H City Manager Contract. Is there any public comment for any of these items or something not currently on the agenda?
Go for it. So Maria Ehorn, and I just had some concerns about the raising the city manager's salary. I don't know, we just got our sales tax passed. Do we actually have this money in hand so that we can do this? And that appears to be a just between 145 to 166,000, around 21%. And then the 80 hours on top brings it up even higher. So it's really closer because that's two weeks of paid vacation. Brings it up to another 64, a little over, a total of 173 and change. So I'm just wondering where where this is money's coming from. I'd like to see some of our projects that have been in the works for quite a while being completed prior to upping some salaries. Now, I'm not against people who, you know, the working class people getting that too, but somebody's got to be responsible for what's not happening in the city. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
I do have a public comment from Madeline.
Thank you, city clerk. Hi, Madeline Kaufman here. Haven't been involved coming to city council meetings in a while and I want to apologize, but I definitely look forward to getting involved more and seeing how everything's going. You guys are doing a great job as city council members and working your hardest and I can tell. I definitely can tell that and I really thank you for everything that you're doing. When it comes to the city manager's raise that she's requesting, I would urge you to think twice about giving her that raise. Like Ms. Ehorn was saying, there's a lot of projects that were promised to be completed and or at least started. For example, the city pool, the Sycamore Park renovations and like the promises to fixing the sidewalks are just a few that I've been hearing that local people in Willow's are kind of like wondering about why ground hasn't been broken and what's going on with that $4.5 million grant that has a deadline of next year and and we just had the sales tax raised and we don't have a recreation department for the youth. I believe that it's more important that we focus on other things rather than just giving a raise to one person in our city department. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further public comment?
Yeah, we speak about the same thing because you guys are talking about trying to get the city police back and all these other projects. And here you want to give her that big raise. I think it's ridiculous. The other things need to be tended to before that because we actually do need a city police back here and you guys are working on it. And all this money that's going to her when she don't even live here to do things could go to the police and the other projects rather than this big salary raise. I think it's ridiculous.
Were those your cards as well? Or are those on separate matters?
I don't have any more cards, but there'll be more.
Is there any more public comment? Okay. Pleasure to the council.
Well, I have some comments with regard to what they've brought about. It's a matter of this council taking a very serious look at all of what we've survived the last three to five years with the economy and the rising costs. Our our general liability insurance is up like 60 something thousand dollars. All of which is why we needed a sales tax increase. Our employees, the general bargaining unit and the fire department have gone their contract, their three-year union contract that was expired in January, July 1 of 24. They worked the last year without a contract. So those contracts were something that we've listened to over the last several months. The most of the C, D, E, F and G were all about that. At the same time, our city manager was hired in 2021 and has not had a salary increase since that time. Even though her contract required a 3% to 5% cost of living increase. As a matter of fact, she came to the council and said, we don't have the money, so let's not do that. So that is when we actually stepped forward and said, well, how can we assist you a little bit? It's non-monetary and that's where we came up last year with an additional vacation. I know it's not timely. It seems like in your face to the citizens and I understand that. When I was elected to the council, I wanted to make sure that we move forward in the best way possible. I was part of what I think some of you felt was a was a positive change. We have replaced the city attorney. We have replaced the city planner. And I did not come in with an axe on our city manager. I sat down and spent my last, I spent 35 years of my working career managing people. And I understood what she's done and she's helped us tremendously in contracts dealing with our sheriff's department. She led the way and she actually had enough contract and contacts throughout the state of California that brought folks to us that Gary and I and sitting on the sheriff or the law enforcement committee actually had the ability to ask some questions and understand better where we are. And it's unfortunate that here we are, but one of the things we need to do as a council is take care of the staff that's actually doing the work. And that includes the line staff that's mowing the lawns all the way to the top. And so this particular agenda item addresses the whole Mary Ann trying to be parody. Now, it seems like a very large increase, but it's 3 and a quarter percent, I believe, for the last five years. Is why we get to where we are. And it looks like a big number, but it is far cry from where the standard, and I hate to use the standard of what the every other city uses as far as salary basis. But as far as our city to the north, that city manager, but time is in July would have been 35, $30,000 more than our current city manager we have today. So to replace that city manager, as some of you called out on Facebook, would require to pay a what do you call it when they actually leave and you have to pay
Severance.
Severance pay. And then we'd have to hire a new city manager. It's just not in the cards. What I have found in my three years or two and a half years on this council is Ms. Brown is actually serving the citizens well. And I think she works more than 40 hours a week on our behalf. And I think maybe some of the other council members have something to say, but I know it's looks bad. And I understand that. But at the same time, when I was elected, I decided that I would run one term and do everything I could with the best decisions possible for whatever I could do for the city. And that's what I hope to be doing throughout the rest of my term. Thank you.
You have council members, any more comments?
Yeah, just want to echo what Rick's saying. I'm I don't have as much of the background as the buildup of all this. My me and my family moved here in 2022, so I've been a little outside of that and I think that's kind of a good thing. It's it's a contracted deal. I agree with with Rick that this is tough. You won't hear anybody in here that's more scrutineering of our finances than me. But this is well earned. I think, you know, Marty, you know, there's a long, you know, history that's been building up and everything like that. Marty's good at what she does. She really is. And so I I think that not just for Marty, but for public works, for fire, all the collective borrowing units, library, everybody, all of these folks deserve this money because they've gone for too long in an environment where inflation, we can't keep up with inflation, so they deserve it. As to the projects that are brought up, I think we share a lot of the same frustrations that you do. They are in flight. For instance, I'm not sure what the actual specific deal, like the pool. We've been really interested in making sure that that happens. There were some bits about rehabbing the pool that cost more than we thought. We were able to cover those costs through the, I believe it was through the Sycamore Park Grant. And but hey, I don't know if anybody's ever dealt with a contract or anything like that. It never costs, it never gets done in the amount of time they tell you and it never gets done for the amount of money they told. And that's what we're up against. So we're working toward it. We're we're really interested. The pool is a a big initiative that I think all of us have as well as a few other things. I know that law enforcement, Willis PD is a big deal and that's going to be really expensive and we want to make sure that that happens for folks. Because you guys have asked for it. So I I know most of you folks don't know me. I we're using as much of the, we're gathering as much of the information as we can to make the best choices that we can for the long term of City of Willow's. And I I hope that y'all come to see that.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I echo Rick's and Matt's comments exactly without without being repetitive, but well said, well said. And Rick, especially with your, you know, with your with the way you kind of wrapped it up, you know, the entire situation, but you know, like Rick said, it it looks like a large number. It's it works out to, you know, like I said, a little under 4% a year, basically. And as Rick said, Marty's contract contract called for a 3% to 5% annual increase. Marty did not want to pay raise since she's been here every year because as you know, we've we've had major fiscal issues, budget issues here. We're now on our way out of that with the sales tax measure being passed. Thank you very much to the voters for for passing that measure. It was the right thing to do. And like Marty did not want to raise, absolutely refused refused to raise. Our entire city staff is is remains dedicated and to the city in all aspects and they've stuck with us. That's from our city manager on down. We're very fortunate to have the staff that we do. We've just got a fabulous staff all across the board. I'm proud of, I'm proud of our city team, absolutely. And I'm proud of each and every one of these individuals sitting over at this table tonight. They're dedicated, committed professionals, serving you very well. So now is the time to make it somewhat right and provide modest, and yes, I say modest salary increases to our entire city staff. I say modest because they've held with with us, they've stuck with us. We we haven't had been able to provide them very much in a way of cost of living increases, very minimal. And these are overdue and now we're finally right getting at the position and that's the position that we can do this. Yes, we have a balance. We have a balanced budget as you'll as you'll find tonight sitting through through this meeting. We have a balanced budget largely because of Marty's dedicated work since she's been here. The day she she came in is as acting city manager, she hit the ground running. She hasn't stopped since. She works seven days a week. The only time, the only time Marty is not working is when she is out of the country on vacation. That's it. And I can attest to that. I'm going to attest to the emails. I'll show anybody the timestamps on on emails that come in all the time at midnight or later, including last night, Marty, a couple of them right around midnight or 11:30, something like that. I've been on the phone at Marty for a long, you know, as as different issues come up at midnight on Saturday nights, Sunday nights, Friday nights, and everything else. She works all the time. Enough said about that. Marty has been good for the city of Willow's and being a city manager, you you cannot have a thin skin to be a city manager, any city man, anybody who's been in that role for more than a week can tell you that. City managers are easily hated for a number of reasons, but as Matt said, we we have, I appreciate your comments, Maria, and and the questions on on the projects. All the projects are in the are in the pipe and are working. We had some, we had some engineering setbacks and whatnot on and some had to do, make some design changes in reference to the pool because of financial limitations on our on our funding sources. But it's still there and it's going to be done. Absolutely will be done. Sycamore Park will be done. Jensen Park has been done. Sidewalks and other issue, we're working on that, but that's it's all about, you know, you know, that's a, that's a 3.1 million dollar dollar question right there. But anyway, these are, all in all, just to wrap up, these are modest salary increases and we have, as Rick advised, we have we have our fire and our general bargaining unit agreements tonight and as well as our management. Every, all of our staff are getting modest salary increases that that are long overdue. And that's that's what this boils down to. I'm proud of the work Marty's done. I'm glad she's here. She's been really good for the city of Willow's. As Rick said, Rick came on and on a, you know, was elected on a on a change. What's going on here in this, you know, in the city? Absolutely. That's the voters, that's your right to know, right? Rick came on, Rick is a fantastic city council member. He's he he's serious about his job. He's committed to it. I've I I respect and admire Rick and I really enjoy working with him. And Rick has found out that a lot of the nonsense that that was floating around was just that nonsense, right? So this is a professionally ran city and and our goal, my goal is I'm 105 is is to maintain that aspect with with a professional staff. Insert names here. I'm not using any names, whatever. We we just need quality people here. These modest salary increases are a way to retain our quality folks doing doing the jobs. And this is a fiscally conservative council. The previous council, since I've been on this city council, this is maintained to be, this has always been a fiscally conservative council. I'm a fiscally conservative guy. There there you go. And and there is nobody on this council, including our city manager, that that goes around spending money needlessly and just willy wonkily or whatever. That's a terrible, terrible term, but whatever that means. But I mean, this this is a responsible spending plan and a responsible budget as you'll as you'll as you'll witness later tonight, but that's all I had to say. So thank you for for putting up with my with my comments. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pride?
I think what I've heard from people about since the agenda item came out is the kind of the disappointment, if you will, that the city manager isn't involved more in community activities, isn't involved more in the town. And you know, when we go out and recruit, especially for a position like city manager, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in that job. There's a lot of things to know. And you don't just walk into it from another profession and know all the things that you have to do. So when you recruit for a position like that, and I would say even for some of our department head jobs, it's highly likely that they're going to be coming from somewhere besides Willow's. And unfortunately, we as a council cannot require anyone to move to move to take the job. The housing market hasn't been great in Willow's. So sometimes finding a house to even move into for a while there, you know, there were eight listings on the market, so you were lucky to find a house to buy in Willow's. So I agree. I mean, I think they can all all would nod their heads and say Lori has made the comment a couple of times. It's like, you know, I really wish that our department heads lived in town. There's a little different. They get a different vibe from the city. They have a different sense of what the community needs when you actually live here. But they don't, you know, so I don't think that detracts from our city manager's ability to do her job any more than I think it detracts from Chief Monk's ability to do his job, living in Orlando or or Joe living in Orlando. They come to work, they they do the job for the city of Willow's and you know, a lot of the job the city manager does is in the trenches, in the regs, in all the state stuff that has to be done. And in our ideal world, would we have a city manager that lived here and could go to all the functions on the weekends and in the evenings? I would say yes, that would be an ideal. But I don't, in my mind, when people say that we don't think our city manager is a good city manager because they're not living here and they're not as involved in the community. I hear what you're saying, but I don't think that detracts from probably 95% of the job that she needs to do. And so with that, I'm supportive of the increase in the salary. I agree if any of our staff were to leave, if any of our employees were to leave for whatever reason, it's very difficult to recruit and fill if you're not offering competitive wages, if you're not work environment, all those things matter. So I would say I I hear what you're saying when you talk about community involvement. I would tend to agree with you, but it doesn't make me dissatisfied with the performance of our city manager. And with that, I mean, if if we were to lose one, my fear being here on the council was that, you know, get elected to the council and have Measure I Not pass and have all of our employees leave. There's absolutely no way to run a city without employees, without staff, without people who know the job. So I feel it's very important that we take care of them, that we're mindful of inflation, cost of living, all those things that go on. And yes, it's a balancing act between projects and getting things done. And I think as we're closing this fiscal year with the balanced budget, we're carrying over surplus. We're showing a surplus in our budget next year. You know, I think that just shows that our our ship that was listing and maybe going under is is writing itself. And I think going forward, these negotiations are good for four years. So going forward, I believe that we'll be able to keep allocating, keep doing projects and please, community, keep showing up, keep telling us what's important to you. You know, we've heard clearly the library is important. In this packet is the full-time librarian job classification. Moving forward with those things that are important to the community. Recreation is definitely important. You know, in my mind, we need to look at being a little bit creative and maybe looking at Chico State and doing some internships with master's program type folks where we can bring people in at a lower cost and still run some nice programs. And we're going to get to, we're going to get there. There's only 18 employees and so many hours in the day, so it's hard to bite off everything at one time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing.
Go ahead.
For the pool, if folks weren't aware, we did sign a kind of an agreement with the Willow's High Pool. Is that correct? Yeah.
Willow's
Still, there's still a place to go swimming. I just want to, if people didn't hear, you can go swimming over. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just
Go ahead.
Just promise it'll only take 10 seconds. Lori, Lori mentioned this in reference to requiring employees, municipal employees to live within the city limits. It's it's unconstitutional. So it period that, yeah. It's been tested many years ago, so an employee can live wherever they want to live in the state of California, basically. So that's all I had to say, just to just to clarify that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So reiterate a lot of what my colleagues said. They all spoke very well. I usually don't do as well of a job. But I will be the first one to say that I have butted heads with Marty. We have not agreed on things. We have agreed on some things. She comes from a different background than I do. We don't believe a lot of the same things. With that, she brings a huge scope and knowledge that you cannot find someone else in our city to run the city the way she's capable of doing. The way that she's able to, on top of being the city manager, act as the CFO for the first three years. The way that she was able to be the acting community development and service director before Joe was hired, before she was able to also be the city clerk, before she was able to work with the city engineer and do a lot of those other roles. Marty, before you, we have Item 6G on here. Who wrote the job classification for that? Who came up with that?
I did.
Okay. So I hear a lot, she's not supportive of the library. She wrote the job classification to make sure that we do get a library director that's able to keep offering the services that we need. Marty, where did you go to visit a different town where they had to develop a police department? Who went, who went to go visit, make that visit?
Chief and I went to the city of Lathrop to learn more about how you go about developing and re, not reestablish, start a brand new police department in that case.
Right. Okay. Not being outreach with the public. Asking me about the pub crawl or the city public crawl. Not pub crawl, sorry. Public crawl, city hall crawl, sorry. But pregnant if I'm wrong, was that not your brainchild that came to fruition? Okay. To get in contact with who, right? The citizens of the town that you're working in.
To introduce our facilities to the residents.
To the folks. And the corporate yard barbecue is another one of those ideas. I would have to say she might not live in town, but she definitely lives for this town. She works her butt off all the time. There's emails I get on Saturdays and Sundays after hours doing the job of sometimes more than just one person. And you can't ask very many employees to do that. I know at my office, if I asked my staff to do the job of two or three people and not pay them more, they'd be out the door looking for another job. And I'm pretty sure every private sector job would feel that way. So with that, yes. Is the timing off? Probably not the best timing. Okay. But when you're talking about somebody that's worked selflessly to try and better our town, you don't have to look any farther. So that's my two cents on the matter. I'll give this back to the council for their recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent calendar. Item 6A, B, C, D, E, F, G and H as presented.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a first and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All opposed, same sign. Motion pass five to zero. Next up, items, we will be moving Item 7B to first. So Item 7B Landscaping and Lighting Special Assessment District Authorization to Levy Assessments. This will be presented by Joe Benton Court. This will be presented by Joe Betancourt.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the third and final part of the process that we have to go through every year for the lighting and landscaping assessment district. It is required by the state streets and highways code, which we have been following every year. This item before you tonight has not changed since it was before you on May thirteenth, which is when the preliminary engineers report was presented to you. I'll go over just a couple of things, just to remind anybody who may be interested in making a public comment, but the district was formed back in the mid two thousands. It has three zones in it, zone A, which is Birch Street. Subdivision, zone B, which is surrounding the Walmart development, and zone C, which is down off of Harvest Drive by the cheese factory. And those three zones are maintained by assessments collected through this lighting and landscaping assessment district. Those assessments are collected on tax rolls. Presuming that each year you authorize the levying those assessments, we get information over to the county assessor's office and they put it on the tax bills. Each year, the the way the lighting and landscaping reports are required each year, and one of the reasons why is because they fluctuate. And what we're supposed to do is, you know, we we put forth what we think the budget is going to be. And then at the end of the year, if the budget is different, we make up for it the next year. Meaning that could mean reduced assessments and it could mean increased assessments. And if you look back over all the years, there are several years where the assessments go down, there are several years where the assessments go up. But it's intended to be self leveling. This year, probably the all three zones are proposed to go up, two of the zones, which are zones A and C. One of the things that we're doing, we haven't been able to do for a long time, is we're actually putting out a request for proposals from landscape companies and landscape maintenance companies that we're going to refurbish a lot of the landscaping in zones A and C as well as the irrigation, and then potentially look at options for contracting out those maintenance services. So that's one of the reasons why we're seeing increases in zones A and C assessment. I will also say that if you look in detail at these, you're going to see in a couple of the zones, we are contributing monies from reserves. The council set policies a number of years ago where you want reserves in the ten to twenty percent range for each one of the zones, which we've been able to maintain. When assessments, when those reserves get too high, we use those to offset assessments, which is the case tonight and as well as in years past. So with that, I I know the staff report outlines a lot of information, which I won't go over in detail. But the process tonight is, you know, certainly provide any comments that you may have. You open up the public hearing, take any public comments. Close the hearing, and then if you have any changes you want to direct me to make with respect to the assessment district, you can do that. If it all looks okay, then I would ask that the council consider adopting the resolution to authorize the levying of assessments. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Pleasure to the council, any questions?
No question, Mr. Mayor, just just a quick brief comment. City engineer John Wanger, as always, excellent job in your staff report, the engineers report, good job. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Kirk.
It's all hit, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I have just one comment. And this is from personal experience of hiring gardeners. You don't specifically write down everything you want them to do, three months, six months later, they forgot what you told them you needed to do. So whatever, if you do go to outside contract, it needs to be very specific as to everything that they need to do.
I will tell you that two hours of this afternoon, I was writing the RFP doing exactly that.
Good job. Councilor, go ahead. Councilor Busby, anything to add? Okay. With that, we will go ahead and open this up for a public hearing at six thirty-five. Anyone for a public hearing? Okay, see no public comments during the public hearing, we will close this at six thirty-six. Okay. Does the board have anything further to say on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just in, I said at the previous meeting, but I'll just just repeat it briefly. Yeah, in reference to the zone A assessment, that's either, that assessment has either remained the same or been reduced many more times than it's ever been increased. So this is, this is kind of one of those rarities, just, you know, to to cover some expenses and get that reserve back up. But that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Well, with that, ready for a motion?
Yes, sorry, I was reading my cheat sheet.
No, so I would move that we adopt resolution next in line, a resolution approving the annual engineers report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the city of Willow's landscaping and lighting assessment district pursuant to the landscaping and lighting act of nineteen seventy-two.
Second?
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Busy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
And Mayor Hudson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you, John, drive safe.
Thank you, John. Next up will be original item seven A. Annual public hearing on city job vacancies. City Manager Brown, will you please?
Yes, I'll introduce the item, but the city clerk is actually going to make the presentation tonight. So AB twenty-five sixty-one was passed recently in the last year. It went into effect in January of twenty twenty-five. It requires that we do a public hearing and a presentation every year before the budget is approved, which is why it's literally before tonight's budget. And talking about mainly that the point is to discuss vacancies in the city and what the vacancy rate has been like, what it's looked like. In addition, it was my job to notify both bargaining units that this was going to be presented and that they had an opportunity to speak if they wanted to. I don't know if Caitlin is here to speak tonight on behalf of the general bargaining unit on that, it looks like the answer is no. So I had, I did notify them by email and it looks like they won't be speaking tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that the council understood this is a state mandate and a state requirement, and we will be doing this from now on annually. With that, I'm going to hand it over to the city clerk.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, councilmembers. This is our first annual public hearing under AB twenty-five sixty-one to discuss the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention strategies. We'll review current staffing levels, ongoing recruitment efforts, and barriers that may hinder effective hiring. The purpose of the hearing is to comply with the Assembly Bill twenty-five sixty-one public transparency requirements. And we're reporting on job vacancies and hiring challenges, recruitment and retention strategies, and barriers to effective hiring. Current vacancy overview as of June twenty-four today is we have eighteen full time positions authorized with an approximate average time to hire of thirty days. The current vacancies are two with a vacancy rate of five point five percent, that's pretty low. For the general bargaining unit, both vacancies fall within that unit of eight full time employees. The two vacancies are the mechanic and the library clerk, which equals a vacancy rate of twenty-five percent. Our overall retention rate is ninety-four percent and the average turnover rate is five point five percent. Recruitment activities, we advertise job postings on Indeed and other specialized job boards, which are tailored to the specific job type. Additionally, we post to Facebook, the city website, and the Glen County Job Tips Bulletin Board. Working in collaboration with Glen County Action, Community Action Department, and we participate in internship and job training programs. Retention strategies currently are updated, compensation studies, and cost of living adjustments. Employee development, development and training incentives, flexible work schedules, and recognition and internal promotions. We do have some recruitment and hiring barriers for specialized roles, there's a limited applicant pool because we compete with larger cities for top talent. There is a lengthy background check and onboarding process, and the salary is not really competitive in the current market with other cities our size, our size. Policy and procedure review, we are reviewing job descriptions and minimum qualifications, evaluating whether applicants have fair and unbiased opportunities in hiring practices, and reviewing timelines for unnecessary delays. And considering faster conditional job offers by making policy updates. Our next steps would be to implement the recruitment process improvements, explore additional retention incentives such as career development and a wellness policy. And then we will report, reassess, and adjust strategies accordingly. And encourage continued community input and transparency, transparency. If you have any questions or comments, they are welcome. You can contact me and written comments can be made to info@cityofwillows.org or you can submit a public comment card, which can be found on the table in the back of the room. And with that, I just want to thank you for your time, and please reach out with any questions or ideas because we do value your opinions. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, Marty can answer anything.
Good, good job, Carleen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will leave it to the pleasure of the council for any questions directed only towards City Manager Brown.
Marty. Or Joanne.
Well, based on our action on the consent calendar for six G, you now have three vacancies.
We have three vacancies.
That's, I guess technically that is true, although the position that was vacant is a contract position, but now it will be part of the budget presumably, assuming the budget is approved tonight.
So I guess for me overall, have we had, say in the last five to six years, have we had excessive turnover in positions? I know we've downsized, so I don't know if as people have left. And I'm just coming in as basically a six month council member. So just curious, when we start looking at that turnover and retention?
Well, we have reduced, you're correct, like when I think of public works, for example, that department is smaller than it was when I first started here. But I would say the four positions, not including the mechanic, have been pretty stable in the last couple of budgets budgeted for. And we've had about a, in the last two years, about a fifty percent turnover. So there's two people out of those four that have been here over the four years that I've been here or longer. And there's two new people that came on since I started. And there's been, and and I can only reference for the four years I've been here, right? So in the four years I've been here, there has been two library tech positions, there have been two community development technicians, there have been two community development directors, there have been one, two, three, four city clerks. So that's all on a four year span. So just about every position, with the exception of the superintendent of public works, has been turned over. In finance, there's been one, two, two positions completely turned over, actually three, because we had one finance person for five weeks. So I just forgot. So I mean, you know, in a four year period, I would say in a small community, that's pretty high. On the other hand, I would also say in the four years I've been here, four council members have resigned, which is also considered pretty high in our line of work. So I don't know, you know, it depends on how you look at it, right?
So so just one of my thoughts is if we have employees leaving and separating, I don't know if we've ever implemented an exit interview type process so we can find out more about the reasons why. I mean, sometimes it's life changes, but sometimes there's other reasons, so.
We have not instituted a formal process, I have had informal conversations with some of the people that have left, some have been more abrupt than others. And obviously those people, there hasn't been any time for conversation, but some of them I have had informal discussions with about it. But I think that would be important to formalize, actually, as part of our HR policy.
Well, I mean, I just think so, if we've had that kind of turnover, I mean, hopefully, you know, as things start to stabilize financially and whatnot, and then as we're, hopefully, as the budget grows, you know, bring in maybe a few more public works employees on and trying to get back to, you know, where we have enough people to do all the work that actually needs to be done, that it'll be important to know, I think, why people are leaving, if they're leaving, if there's something we can do to change things, make it different. It's good to know.
Good point, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may?
Yes.
Just to follow up, Lori's a good question, Lori, but so Marty, in reference to four city clerks, I just want to clarify that, okay? Tara was a city clerk, there is now community development services technician, that's one. There was one city clerk that is no longer here for obvious reasons, that's all I will say, okay? Okay. That didn't work out well, that hire. And then Amos, we all know and love Amos. Amos was, you know, retired right out of the US Navy. This is his first job out of the Navy, and he had the opportunity of a lifetime to go back to work for the Department of the Navy or the Defense Department, one or the other, I forget now, for a lot of money down in San Diego. So and and that satisfied the anomaly with the four city clerks, and now we're very fortunate to have Carleen. So glad you're here, Carleen. I just wanted, just wanted to clarify that, so if if anybody took that out of skew. Yeah, you're welcome, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Busby, any questions?
I'm supportive of the exit interview, anytime we can collect data and make data back decisions, I'm in.
Absolutely.
Perfect, at this time, I will open this up to the public hearing at six forty-eight. Anyone wishing to give public hearing comments can come forward now. As there's been an adequate opportunity for the public to be heard, I close the hearing to further public comment at six forty-eight. Any more comments or questions from the council before I move on?
None, Mr. Mayor.
No.
Okay. Seeing that the hearing has concluded, we will take this matter under submission. Did I do that correct? Sweet, okay. We move on to item eight A, final budget approval, recommended action, consider, discuss, and make amendments as needed and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. And we will give this off to Joanne Moore. Pick a mic, any mic.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Close to the mic, please. What's up?
Closer.
Closer.
Do you want me to be louder?
Or that, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's better.
Before you was the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I did edit or added the librarian position that was approved earlier, so that was included. That was not in there last week when we did the presentation. I also made another small adjust, or not adjustment, but a, an edit where I put something in the wrong department. Thank you, Councilman Busby, for catching that, I appreciate it. I moved the sixty thousand for the municipal code. I had it under city attorney, so I moved that off to the planning department for Harrison Associates, that was my mistake. I also what else did I do? I think that was it. And just adding in the librarian, so the expenditures did change. They are now totaling seven million two sixty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three. The revenue did not change from last week, those were my only adjustments. And again, going back to last week's presentation, everything was status quo. You can see from the staff report that we had our increase of expenditures for, of approximately seven hundred and fifty-one thousand to account for the sheriff's office health insurance. of approximately 751,000 to account for the sheriff's office, health insurance, salaries. The compensations for all the labor negotiations, negotiations that were also passed this evening. The unfunded pension liability, property insurance, and just our basic overhead costs that we need to run the city. Our additional spending of 450,000 was to increase staffing with a couple of temp or part-time employees. Again, going back, updating the municipal code, replacing our IT equipment. So we have a lot of computers that are outdated that we need to replace, which we went over that last week. We have to replace a public works vehicle because we had a pickup that terminated itself. Updating our city's website, the concrete replacement at the fire station, additional print material for our library and our contract with HDL to continue with the auditing of the transient occupancy tax to make sure that we are being paid correctly. Updating the audio visual equipment in chambers and I think that was it. Again, I did not make any, any other changes. I don't know if anybody has any additional questions to ask, but the floor is yours.
I would just like to add that also there's a number of individual line items that did increase that were just, you know, the cost of doing business. So you may have noticed if you compared year to year, if you did a line by line, you'll find, I don't know, it's close to $100,000 of just, you know, maintenance for equipment, facilities, that kind of thing.
Yes, fuel.
Fuel.
Utilities.
Line by line. So if you, if you see, compare year to year, you might've noticed that and that's just inflation.
Gumballs aren't a penny anymore, huh? Pleasure of the council, Councilmember Thomas?
Not this time.
Okay. Councilmember Pride? Councilmember Busby?
Uh, yeah, I would like to point out for those keeping up with the library, the library had an almost a 20% increase in budget and it's the largest budget that the library has ever had in the history of City of Willows.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson? Just keep it square. Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's just, you know, this budget includes using no general fund reserves, which is remarkable for the City of Willows. We're not used to that. So we have a balanced budget. And moving forward, that's a very good thing. It's been a long time getting here, a lot of work getting here. Uh, thank you Marty and the team. And my colleagues on the council for making that happen. So it's just, it's for once excellent news. And I know it's in the staff report, but let's not forget fire engine two replacement discussion coming up in 2026 soon.
The mid-year budget, yes.
Very good. Absolutely. Let's not forget that. We, we need fire engine two replacement, one way or the other. Very good. Okay. Very good. Just.
I want either. I don't want to drive the old two.
And just, I just want to thank Marty, I thank you and Joanne and the, and the city team for so many very clear, concise, easy to understand budget document, staff report. I know. You know, the budget's a fluid number and it's, it's oftentimes the best guess, right? With, you know, you've got funds coming from a lot of different sources, as we know. And they do vary and things do break. And that's going to happen, but, but good job on, on a very, like I say, easy to understand and an accurate budget document to present. So, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm trying to find it here. Marty or Joanne, do you guys know how long it's been since the city's actually been able to run off of its own funds without digging into its reserves?
I'm looking at this chart that I have and the last time was 2122, they had a 374,000 surplus. Then the following year it was a 415,000 deficit and then 817,000 deficit. This current fiscal year, we're projected to have about a 300,000 surplus. And then our projection for the upcoming year will be a little over 400,000.
Okay.
Just as a reminder also, when Andy Heath, our finance consultant, started working with us in 2021, like literally two weeks after I started here. Andy started going through the budget and found a number of one-time monies that were just either allocated in the wrong place and did quite a bit of cleanup and it, it produced a pretty big lump sum. But then when we started actually balancing the rest of the budget, of course, we started quickly in the next year, using it to balance the budget. But so it was, it was great for a year, but we needed it to, to balance the budget, so.
Okay. No, I want to say a good job on the forecast. Yeah. And you know, with this, we are bringing in hopefully our own library director. We'll be bringing in a new fire engine to serve the community, hopefully, planning on that. And this will set us up to continue to start replacing some of the worn down items. I believe Chief, you're mentioning ladder truck bore is about halfway life, I think, a little bit over. Yeah. So you know, items like that, big ticket items that we're going to have to start replacing. We actually have the funds now to start, start squirreling away some of those, those nuts to make sure for a cold winter when we, we need them. So thank you for this and thank you for, I guess the mom systems, it's not moms, moms is the old system, Tyler system does a much better printout. I'm assuming that this printout is off a Tyler, right?
No.
It's Andy. That's a, it's a spreadsheet to make these fancy charts and graphs. Yeah. And it's originally Andy's spreadsheet.
No. So these, this is Andy's spreadsheet here?
That is what he has used
Oh, okay.
The past few years and sent over. However, the numbers are derived from Tyler.
The Tyler system, okay.
And they do have some excellent reports that are, that we run or I run daily.
Okay. And then that's also going to be what's in charge of potentially our property taxes and.
Not property taxes, sewer.
Sewer, sorry. That's on the property tax bill. That's
Yes.
My mis, my mis speaking, but no, thank you. I think everything's very clear and well spelled out. So good job for your fourth time? Third time giving this presentation?
Second, no, third, I don't know. Yes, correct. That's all I've been doing, so.
No, that's all I have. I will leave it to the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, move that the resolution entitled the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 operating budget be adopted as presented?
Seconded.
I have a first and a second. Um, this will, oh, this is just an irregular action. I'm correct. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion pass five to zero. Okay. With that, we will go into item nine, comments and reports. I apologize. I need to go back to item seven or eight A. I did not ask for any public comment on our final budget approval. Is there any public comment on item eight A, final budget approval?
Roblin Kaufman again. Um, I just want to say I'm really impressed. I had no clue. I haven't been paying attention. I apologize again, but yay, I'm really excited for everybody and thank you, thank you as a member of this community. Like, yes, let's keep going forward. And I'm really excited about everything you guys are saying. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will move on to item nine A, uh, council correspondence, which I have none of.
You wanted to mention the one.
Oh, you have council correspondence over there?
Well, it's the only thing that you gave to me. I don't, do you want to?
Oh, yes, there was. I have no idea how they messed that up, but the solar contract for the civic center that got mailed to my office PO box um, somehow instead. Your, your private PO box or here it? No, my Hudson Insurance Agency. Yeah. Okay. So this is a preliminary notice and before they do construction projects, they send these out in case there is an issue. Usually it's subcontractors or main contractors of these projects. So they do tend to send them out to anyone and everyone that they possibly can. And I think I have the same copy I've received. So before the barrier solar comes in and starts the fire station project or the wastewater treatment plant, they'll send these out that we've been noticed.
This is for the solar.
Yep. Okay. But how, why they use their home, your home address is unknown to me. Business address, yep. So. Okay. Yeah, I'll tell them not to send it there again. That did come to the office or to city hall as well. Okay. My concern was is that they just have the wrong address. Yep. Nope. You're good. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, but they, they send them out on usually to anybody and everybody to cover all their bases. So. Okay.
I got three copies of the fire station.
Perfect. Very, they know what they're doing. So they send it there. Perfect.
You have a, you have a timeline for installation and completion?
For the fire station or the wastewater treatment plant?
All of.
All of the above. Uh, so the fire station, I actually, the, they're through the permitting process at this point. So we're working on scheduling installation with them. I sent them an email today to kind of kick off a project meeting for that. Wastewater Treatment Plant is currently in at Coastline Engineering under plan check review. And I don't think we've got any comments back at this point, but normally that's a two to three week process. So in the next week or so, we should see if their design has passed. And after that, for the wastewater treatment plant, it's basically, we've got to obviously wait for the water to get off of our rice field for construction and those kinds of things, but it really does. It's really lining up with the, the PGE infrastructure upgrades that are needed to be done out at that, out of onsite by PGE. So we think that timeframe of, I think around August, September for construction out there, it will all, all fall in place, barring any setbacks. And then the civic center, they've, they've actually asked me about this one. We're waiting for the roof repair to happen before they have the roofing company come out and look at it. So.
The ceiling.
Yes. So, um, we've got the roof piece of that contract and it's just, they actually brought that one up and wanted to come out and look at it. I said, well, we've got, we've got a little thing to look at before you guys come out. So, um.
We're just waiting on the beam.
Yep.
It's an oversized, unusual sized beam. Had to be specially ordered. And so we've done all the modern builders has done all the prep work and we're just waiting for the beam to ride so we can finish.
Yep. And they told me to let them know as soon as the library works done, barrier solar, so they can come out and do their, their roof investigation and do that check.
Do you have an ETA on that? I know we've ordered some building stuff that they've put us at 18 months of waiting for materials.
Yeah. Is that from modern building and the beam?
It's steel.
Weeks.
Yeah, red steel.
Yeah. So we, it was a four week. Originally it was eight weeks and then when we got the contract, it was, they were, hey, with the good news, it's four weeks. And now we're two weeks into that. So approximately another two weeks, the the giant glue lamp beam should be onsite and they'll be going. They came in and did temporary shoring last week to really do a lot better job of holding that up than we originally had in there. So they've been down and checked everything out and removed lights and opened up space and done what they can up until receiving the actual beam itself. So it still looks scary in there? No, they did, they, they, it's.
I think it looks a lot better.
It does.
Okay.
It looks a lot better.
No, I haven't. I meant to poke my head in the other day. Yeah, go pop. They've got big.
Way more secure.
Big jacks underneath it pushing up and they actually went six feet out on each side of the beam and shored up the the other rafters going across. So it, it looks a lot better. It's flush. It's not no sag. Is that part of the library, are they able to use it right now or is it still? No, that room is, is not to be, not to be used. Yep.
You haven't seen Batman in here, have you?
Yeah, the HVAC is not leaning down. So that reshoring was definitely a really good thing. But we had to go through again, the, that had to be engineered, had to have an architect come in and you kind of line that out with the, the full repair. But those guys, modern building did a great job of coming in there and really shoring it up to the maximum possible.
How's the Batcave doing?
I don't think we've had any in a while, but.
We haven't in a while.
Good.
Probably been two or three weeks at least.
It's good.
We have a plan to deal with that too.
Yeah.
As you know.
The Batman, yeah.
I had to ask. Thank you.
Have to do something about it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, and then council, of course, or sorry, city council comments and reports, item nine B. Councilmember Thomas, we'll start with you.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Pride?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Busby?
Nothing to report. Uh, actually, uh, Laurie and I have been trying to, uh, Laurie and I represent the Economic Development Committee. The meeting schedule is not a predetermined or, uh, you know, spaced out deal. So we've been trying to get together every Monday. And kind of come up with some stuff. One of the projects that we're going to be working on is, uh, working with the school, school districts and how we as a council can support the school districts and helping set the youth of Willows up for bigger, better things and all that kind of fun stuff. So we're excited to start, start that. Once we get through all the budget stuff and everything like that.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, just two meetings this week and you were at one of those, uh, regional transit committee meeting on June 19th. Routine business, uh, the major item of business was it is budget, budget time and we approved the, the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2526 or to support the transit services, Glen Ride, if you will. And it's basically a flat budget based on flat gasoline tax proceeds. And the scary thing is that's just the beginning with all these electric vehicles that don't pay for, to use our highways. In other words, they're not buying fuel and paying any taxes. So that's, that's why the sales, the, the tax numbers, the gasoline fuel tax proceeds from the state of California federal government are flat at this point. And also approved a, a two-year contract extension to Helen and Company, advertising for the, uh, advertising on the Glen Ride, uh, uh, transit vehicles, as you've seen. So if you know anybody that's interested, have them contact Marty Thomas or Carlos in Glen County Planning and Community Development uh, for advertising opportunities. It's worked out real well. Following, uh, the RTC meeting was the monthly Glen County Transportation Commission meeting. Again, major item, uh, business item was the approval of the budget, which is flat due to the gasoline proceeds, as I just, as I just indicated. A number of routine business items and also important was, uh, uh, thank you Marty, have a meeting with Marty and Joe and John. Uh, on Friday, a brief meeting in reference to our draft regional transportation plan. Okay? And that's a, it's a working document that the municipalities, City of Willow, City of Orleans, the County of Glen, all provide for roadway improvement projects over the next 20 to 30 year period. So, uh, we'll be meeting with that. The city has submitted, uh, the city will, has submitted an excellent document with a lot of projects. I do, I do have a couple of questions on it. So, and, and I just want to make sure all of our bases are covered, our ducks in order when those funding opportunities come in and we don't miss out on them. So, and if it's not on the list, it's not going to happen. So, but that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, speaking of the Royal Transit Committee meeting, um, we discussed a, a large amount of funds as well that we received. And some possible opportunities for use with that.
Yes.
So we're looking possibly at our next meeting to hopefully go over how to better use some of those funds, um, and some projects that can be done to serve the entirety of Glen County. So, um.
It's a nice surprise.
Close to, close to three million or was it?
Over, over.
A little over three million, right? So.
Over two years.
Large pocket of funds that hopefully we'll have some access to, to hopefully provide some better service for those that can't get around on their own. And with that, um, I wanted to ask for a possible future agenda item is, um, discussing the city parks and their current states. And possibly, um, seen once we get maybe closer to mid-year budget or something to, uh, see about maybe doing some revamping or some repairs. I noticed there's a couple of things broken and missing and just some general upkeep stuff that I think would be good for the whole council to kind of discuss and see if we have a future plan for those. So.
You want to take sort of an inventory of, you know, the status of the parks and things that are broken or missing or whatever, and have that as part of the presentation?
That'd be great. Yeah.
Plan on how to.
If that's, if that's a possibility, yeah, that'd be wonderful. Um, you know, I think one of the things that we discussed with our, our sales tax was to make sure that we're helping our youth any way we can. And so if we can make sure that those parks are up to snuff and you know, nobody's going to get hurt at them, then that's, I think that's a good, a good thing. Um, and so it'd be something, thing for us to discuss in the future.
Great.
And then with that, I believe that's all the council comments unless you had something. Okay. With that, we will go to item nine C, city managers' report.
Very quickly, I only have one, uh, just reminder really for the public that the city council and the planning commission will be holding a joint planning commission council meeting on Thursday, July 10th. I think at 5:30. Does that sound right? Yeah, 5:30. And that is to review title 18 of the municipal code in preparation for the complete overhaul of the code, but that, uh, section of the code in particular, we'll have our city planners here to talk about, um, title 18 and some potential.